Dear Lord, just thank you for the many blessings you've given the town of Stallings. Be with us tonight and guide us and have us do what's best for the town. But most of all, we just thank you for sending your son, Jesus Christ, on Christmas Day. Take away our sins and live our lives through him. Everything we do and say, we give you all the praise and glory. In Jesus Christ's name I pray, amen. Just two. All right, so we have our first up is our public comments. So we have two people signed up. So what you do is you come up here and state your name and address and you can speak on any topic. Just somebody put up the rules and regulations there. But so just three minutes and just tell us what you think. So first up is Mr. Craig Cox.
Tell mayor, Mr. Council members, my name is Craig Cox. I'm here with my wife Jane. I was informed tonight there was apparently some grievance being brought up to the council tonight about my property at 5235 Goldcrest Drive in Indian Trail. You know, apologies for this kind of frivolous motion being brought before you. Apparently the gentleman lives in my neighborhood, three quarters of mile from me, down around the corner. You know, I've never met him, never spoken to him, no interaction with him whatsoever, but he's not man enough to have any speaking with me face to face. I'll give a little background of what's going on tonight. My wife and I purchased this property a little over a year ago. Prior to purchasing this property, I came to the town of Stallings, spoke with your guys in the permit committee, planning everything, Matt, Max, Stuart, everybody. I said, "I'm not buying this house unless I could build a garage." And I'm gonna, I submitted plans, I submitted diagrams, I submitted everything that was required for the garage approval. No problem. It went through, no issues whatsoever. I applied for every permit from Union County, Stallings, every inspection, every passed approval, done, no deal, no problems at all. Although apparently I wasn't aware that I needed Mr. Kirby's approval to get this through the neighborhood. Y'all might want to take that up later with him. You know, my wife and I have spent a year in this neighborhood, made some great friends. Apparently Mr. Kirby's known in the neighborhood. Nobody's ever told me who's been running around behind my back making comments about my wife, myself, my property, my structures, the things that are going on. But today, being essentially forced to come to this meeting, I was informed who it was. So, you know, there again, it's kind of nice to know who you got behind your back. Yeah, we bought this house, my wife fell in love with it. It was where she wanted to live and die for the rest, you know, rest of her life. She'd come home every day going, "This is my dream home, I love it." And now she comes home going, "Who's talked about us today?" So it's really disheartening to have this kind of attitude going on in my neighborhood when I've met every stipulation that I can get and passed every ordinance that has been set before me by both the permitting committee in Union County and everyone else. You know, I'm truly hoping that tonight, that the council will take it upon themselves to kind of put an end to this kind of harassment. I don't know why I've become a personal vendetta here because mine is not the only house in the neighborhood that is having construction and other structures being built around it. But apparently mine is the only one of any concern to Mr. Kirby for some reason. I'm sure that you and some of the other permit members and everything else would appreciate that there be a termination of this kind of harassment also because I know that they've done everything they can do to assuage his problems and issues with this. I mean, but I've had them on my property three and four and five times because of complaints, accusations that have been completely unfounded. And it's just becoming a personal harassment to me and my family. You know, maybe tonight if you can convince Mr. Kirby to let it go and give it up, maybe he can use some of his relentless energy to take care of things like world hunger and homeless puppies. But I'm really tired of being his main focus of, you know, energies right now. So.
Hold on, Mr. Cox. Appreciate you coming tonight. Two things, we usually don't have any dialogue, but there's nothing on the agenda tonight about your property. So there's no action that this council is going to take tonight?
I was, I was informed that Mr. Kirby was going to be submitting a request to appear before council tonight.
Well, he's gonna do, I guess he's the second, he's the second one signing up to speak in public comments, just like yourself. So there's no action gonna be taken tonight?
Well, oh, I understand that, sir. Yes, I do understand that. But I'm just saying, as far as the harassment that I'm continually being subjected to by Mr. Kirby, who has no authority in this neighborhood, I'm kind of finished with it. And I know that you have no, tonight have no authority, but I would at least think, you know, and I'm gonna look directly at Matt, you know, because I know his, him and his team are getting consistent emails and phone calls and, you know, "I want this taken care of, I'm not happy with this, I don't like this." And, you know, what can he do except his job? And I've met every requirement of both Stallings and Union County for my property. And it's just becoming a little much for me as a homeowner.
Well, I'm sorry to hear that. But the second thing is, you know, you can put Stallings, North Carolina on your mail and it'll get to you. I know you said Indian Trail, but I lived in Country Woods East for a while and, you know, I know the reason why it's Indian Trail. If you want to put Stallings, North Carolina, you will get your mail.
Yep.
Huh?
Okay.
Oh, yeah, he knows. He just, you know, everybody's confused over on that side. Not everybody was confused. My dad was confused, he lived there. Thank you, Mr. Cox. All right, next up is Mr. Ray Kirby.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. As he said, I'm here to address the massive garage that was built in our neighborhood.
And could you state your?
Oh, I'm sorry. Ray Kirby, 15601 Knollwood Place in Indian Trail. It's Stallings, Indian Trail, Melon address, yeah.
Yours is probably Matthews, post office.
Yeah. And I didn't see the timer, is it somewhere, well, how much time I got?
Three minutes.
Okay. All right, he's correct, I am here to talk about the garage that was built in our neighborhood. When it was first being constructed, I'll actually tell you the total of two garages. One of my neighbors, two houses up, put in a permit a couple of years ago to build a garage. He was gonna build it just to the left of his house, it was gonna be a brick garage to match his house. Because he used the word detached, he was required to put it five foot behind his structure. And I'm hearing more about the Stallings ordinance than I am about what we have today. Because he couldn't get it five feet behind his structure, behind his, front of his house, which is an ordinance, he was denied permit because his driveway was there. And so we move on from that to the garage we have now. The garage we have now, our property restrictions in our neighborhood, and that's what I started addressing the town with, and I was quickly informed that the town doesn't address property restrictions or covenants. Understand that. And that was made clear to me. So I got digging into the town ordinances, and that's where I'm really here to talk about today. The difference between what's an attached garage and what's a detached garage. If it's a detached garage, it has to be five foot behind the property line and meet certain criteria. If it's an attached garage, there's really no criteria of what attached is. And that was my last email with Max, that was sort of the statement. You can attach it with a board, you can attach it with a pipe, and that's considered an attached garage. And that's where I'm really, I think the town needs to do something to more clarify if there's a breezeway, walkway, or as they call the board that's going across from the house to the garage, a pergola, have it a little more clearly defined. Because once it's considered attached, they can build basically whatever they want. And that gets to the covenants. In Article Nine, where possible, structures should be designed to maintain a harmonious image with the neighborhood when viewed from a distance. And I'm just reading random stuff that's in the covenants that deals with this stuff. Developments shall generally employ building styles that are compatible with the architectural vocabulary of the area and external extent. Adjacent buildings should be thus or similar in scale, height, configuration, maintaining compatibility with the character and structures of the town. Attached house structures should be complement the neighborhood through their design, location, home site, and building materials. And one other thing, developments shall generally employ building styles that are compatible with the architectural vocabulary in the area of external. And then lastly, the application itself, because I was curious, in the application itself, which I sent you all an email, the proposed structure, and this is on the application, the proposed structure will be in accordance with the style and presentation to ask to merge with the style and design of the home. We have a brick home and a steel building that's sitting in the front yard. That's my big complaint, is the town ordinance really doesn't clarify, and I told my neighbor who had applied and got turned down, I said, "Just resubmit it, Mark detached out, put attached, and put a board across there, and it's now fits town ordinances." And that's where I think the issue is. I hope that makes sense to everybody. And that's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Kirby.
Thank you. Oh, can I clarify one thing? I've never interacted with him, but as I said, I haven't been harassed and I've never spoke to him. Have I? I haven't harassed you?
That's the exact part of the problem, yes, sir. And haven't you taken any action?
Just talk to us.
Yeah, and one other comment, it said I made phone calls to Max, or I've never made a phone call to anybody. Everything's been an email and writing, and it hadn't been consistent. It's been every couple of months following up on things. And I think they would clarify that. I've never called and harassed them.
Thank you, Mr. Kirby. Anybody else didn't sign up that would like to speak on any topic? All righty, if not, we'll move on to our consent agenda. All righty. The minutes, the ARPA documents, everybody's got those. The pending, the bonding mitigation project. I did have a couple of questions for Alex on that one that I wanted to, I saw where, you know, most of them were, I saw the problem, but a couple of them were just, seemed like a smaller, didn't require much correction. So I don't know if anybody else had the same thought. I'm gonna pull up the pictures here, which. Yeah, let's pull that down. Let's make that.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve consent items A, B, and D. Bonding mitigation.
11A.
11A.
All right, thank you, Mr. Richardson. Motion by Mr. Richardson. Everybody understand that we're?
Yeah.
You're saying A, B, D?
Right, moving C to 11A.
I'll say it.
All right, Mr. Cole beat you to it. So all in favor?
Ah.
As have it. All righty. Reports from me, the only one I have is obviously, I don't know if everybody made it to the Christmas tree lighting last night. I know Stephen was there, David had, was there and then had to leave, but it was a fantastic event, just like it was last year. Just want to thank the Park and Rec Department for the great job that they did in the tree lighting, and then thank the Police Department for all their support. It's just a great event. And then if y'all weren't, yeah, well attended, if you weren't there, Mark Harris, U.S. Congressman-elect for this district, gave a fantastic mini sermon. You can tell why the man is a preacher. And he didn't need any notes like I need notes to tell the Christmas story, but that was fantastic. So, but thank you, Eunice and your team, and Chief, thank you, you and your team. Anything for us tonight, Graham?
Yes, sir.
All right, Laurie?
Yeah.
Stephen?
Just let everybody know that the WMA meeting was canceled for last month, and so no report for WMA and no other report.
All right. David?
Nothing exciting. Chamber, the Chamber Gale was good, there was a couple of Stallings businesses recognized and. Plows at the Ag Center.
All right. Nothing, all right. Alex, anything for us tonight?
Mayor, I just want to echo your sentiments about the tree lighting ceremony and thank you as well, as well as our park staff, police, and everyone that helped out. And that'll be it for the staff report.
Okay, so no other departments, Chief?
Oh, I apologize, Mayor. I did want to mention, we are, as always, as a matter of routine, submitting the budget line item transfers report for November.
Right. Does anybody see anything on there? I know we just got it, but does anybody see anything on there that? Do call Alex, and we can always bring it up in the next council meeting, which of course will be in January. All righty. So we got one agenda change there, moving one C to 11A. So can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'd like to add one.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'd just like to add, and we can add it anywhere.
11B.
11B. And just, just a very quick discussion on having staff maybe look at some of our policies around personnel when it comes to maternity and paternity leave.
All right, so we'll make that 11B. So a motion to approve the agenda? By Laurie?
Second.
Second by Stephen, all in favor? As have it, all righty. Max, you're up, first one, Silverline Integration Final Draft.
Hey, Council. Excited to present, or have Bolton and Mink here to present the final draft of the Silverline Integration Plan. As you know, we received an 80% grant match from the CRTPO to update our small area plan, our comprehensive land use plan, and create a transportation-oriented development overlay. And I wanted to introduce Bolton and Mink. And I don't know who's presenting first, or Dylan McKnight.
Welcome to your presentation next.
Thanks. Hey, everyone, again. It's been a while. My colleague Alan Davis is here with me. Experience planner, was with, before he came to Bolton and Mink, was with City of Wilmington, City of Charleston, and Town of Cary. So a lot of public service on Alan's resume. So I'm gonna go through a little bit of a refresher since the last time I was here, but I'm gonna still try to be efficient with the time, because I know y'all got a long night. Excuse me, as a reminder, we were asked to integrate the future Silverline into the comprehensive land use plan for Stallings. Reimagine the Monroe Expressway Small Area Plan, which is sort of the physical plan that covers the area down there. Sure. Like this, is that better? To reimagine the physical area plan around the Stallings Road and 74 intersection, and to draft a transit-oriented overlay ordinance to be incorporated in the Stallings Development Ordinance. There's the primary study area, so it's generally half to three-quarter mile radius around the intersection between Stallings Road and 74, where the Silverline Station is currently proposed and adopted documents. And I wanted to reiterate that much of this area was already designated as walk-by activity center and destination for compact mixed-use development in the comprehensive land use plan, regardless of the transit plan. So as a reminder of the schedule, we're nearing the end here, but these are some of the milestones that we had along the way. The survey was a major one that stayed open for a long time. We got generally very positive feedback on the desire for compact, walkable, mixed-use development in this area, which is consistent with the land use plan. So a lot of consistencies in our public engagement along the way from previous planning that had already been done in the community, so that was a good sign. So this was one of our first deliverables, integrate the future Silverline into the comprehensive land use plan. So I wanted to start with some of the goals of the land use plan. Coordinated growth, diversified development, AKA mixed-use development, place making, creating destinations, destination points, adaptive community. I kind of see that as resilience and adapting to change. And then regional collaboration. So I put these up here because we tried to point back to these during our planning to make sure that we were consistent, you know, and not bringing any off-the-wall ideas in that weren't fitting with these goals. And here are a couple of selected goals I pulled from the land use plan. Complete small area plans in key areas to coordinate land use development with transportation infrastructure and encourage mixed use and create destinations. This really principles of smart, smart town planning, smart growth, which we tried to stay consistent to. Increase transportation choices by integrating multimodal options, walking, biking, public transit, driving into existing and new facilities. You'll see some street sections that we propose that just reinforce that multimodal aspect. So all good things, and again, all things that were already in your comprehensive land use plan. I won't read, actually, I'll point to the open space one, OS2. Provide and maintain an open space system that enhances community character, protects natural habitat areas, enhances quality of life, and links people, neighborhoods, and resources together. This was a really major point in the physical area plan that we did because we used floodplain areas, heavily sloped areas, sort of as preserved areas, and imagined that maybe new trails, new community trails could be in these areas that would link neighborhoods that would otherwise be separated by these, these areas. And many of us who are in planning and real estate development and real estate know that these kinds of amenities enhance the quality of neighborhoods and attract people to those neighborhoods. So here are the place types that are already adopted in your, in your land use plan. So as I mentioned before, the pink area is already walkable activity center. The light blue is kind of the majority of the rest of the area, that's suburban office center. And then the yellow is single-family neighborhood. So the walkable activity center place type, this is from your land use plan ordinance, mix of uses, one to five stories, high street connectivity, maximum transportation choices. And there's some graphics of what, what that is imagined as. So what we proposed in the, in the changes would be, majority of it is taking that suburban office center and transitioning it to walkable activity center as well. And some of the reasoning behind that is it can still be an office center, but it can be a walkable office center or a mix of uses. It doesn't have to be classified as only, only office like the previous place types were. And you'll notice this farm property that is there off Smith Farm Road, it was classified as suburban office center, but we suggested it should become walkable neighborhood instead. We thought that was more fitting and adaptive as Stallings moves forward and plans for any potential changes over the next decade or two. So another deliverable was to draft the overlay ordinance. So as a reminder, here are some principles of transit-oriented development, and they're really just good mixed-use development, too. You could take the transit word out of it, and these still show, you know, good mixed-use development, which it sounds like Stallings, you know, and the residents are interested in based on the comprehensive land use plan. So here are some of the qualities of TOD on the left, and the TOD overlay would be the dashed line, the dark black dashed line on that map, which generally extends about a 10, 15-minute walk from, away from the station area. And in the overlay ordinance, what we really did was we took the mixed-use two district that you already have and took those standards and just elevate on them a little bit. So it's not a grand departure from your mixed-use standards that you already have. We just enhanced them a little bit, and I would say we reorganized things a bit, too, to make that piece of the ordinance read a little bit better. So a third deliverable, and this is where the lion's share of a lot of the graphic work products came from, is the reimagining of the area plan. So we took a stance early in the process to sort of detach the planning from transit. This is not transit-dependent. The area plan does not depend on transit coming. If transit comes here, it'll certainly amplify the mixed-use development there, but, and maybe sort of speed up the timeline of it. But the comprehensive land use plan already said, "We want a mixed-use activity center here, regardless of transit." So we wanted to make sure that our planning was adaptable with or without it. So you can see whether light rail comes as it is planned now, or it turns into bus rapid transit, as some media articles have, you know, have stated over the past few months, or if it never happens at all, you still get a really, really smart mixed-use development area here near the highway where, where it really belongs, that, you know, leaves the single-family neighborhoods that are there preserved in their, in their current state. So that's the existing area plan, and you can see the extensive amount of redevelopment that was, was imagined during that plan. I see a lot of parking decks, and I see a lot of parking lots jumping out to me. And this is the approach that we took. So we carved out areas that we thought might redevelop, were more likely to redevelop. Some, some of them based on vacant or underutilized land, some of it based on a lot of property for sale signs that we saw in these areas, so folks are already marketing their properties for sale and redevelopment. And then you notice that large green area, kind of sort of near the top of the graphic, that's all, you know, wet, environmentally challenged, and sloped areas. And those are where a lot of the trails are that we recommended that would really connect the neighborhoods that are on either side of that. And that is important because right now, I know that there's public comment about congestion in Stallings. And that's in one part due to there are not that many ways to get around. There's a few streets, and the network of streets is limited. And, you know, walking and biking options are also limited. So again, going back to the comprehensive land use plan that recommends more walking and biking options, they're provided here in this area plan. And this is something to remember, too, this isn't a requirement that these properties have to be developed like this. This is really more of a suggestion to say, "This is how areas could redevelop over time." If they do, they may not, but if they do, and then this is how you can connect them together and make coordinated development and, and a nice sense of place out of the community, as opposed to uncoordinated, detached, separated development that might detract from that sense of place and the sense of community. And here are some other views of hovering over the atrium property, looking towards 74, so you can get a sense of the height of the buildings that, that we've imagined here. And largely, you see nothing more than four to five stories, as we've illustrated here. And what the street life might look like there near, near Atrium Hospital, looking back towards the hospital from the west side of Stallings Road. And when we showed these kinds of graphics to people at Stallings Fest, we just got a lot of head nods, a lot of like, "Oh, my gosh, it would be great to be able to go to a restaurant down here and sit out, you know, on the, on the sidewalk with cafe seating." So we got a lot of support for these kinds of ideas. This would be looking from the other side of 74 back towards the hospital. And then moving east, we, we went a little bit outside of our study area because we saw how. how the boundaries between Indian Trail and Stallings just kind of zigzag back and forth, and like some of Indian Trail kind of comes into Stallings. And so we thought, God, what a shame if, you know, there's coordinated vision in the Stallings area, but not a coordinated vision on the Indian Trail side. And currently, Indian Trail is planned to have an end-of-the-line station, too. So we imagined what that might, how that area might redevelop, too. And that included the Smith Farm property. So the take we, you know, we drew there was to reimagine it as a neighborhood, but with preserving a lot of the agricultural character that's there. Those grain silos and things that are on Smith Farm Road, you know, maybe those get preserved, and this large swath of open space in the middle becomes, you know, much-needed public open space for a new neighborhood. And it could maintain some of that rolling sort of prairie character that's out there today. And there's another view of that. We heard some folks mention that they might want to see what a nice recreation facility would look like there, completely realizing that there is a large recreation facility down in Indian Trail. But again, you know, these visions aren't a mandate. They're really there to show like what can fit in these areas. You could replace these fields with indoor pickleball court buildings or whatever, you know, you want, or more mixed-use development or more townhomes along the front, either way, as it moves into the future. And then here's a vision of what the front of that farm property might look like if it were reimagined as, like, say, entertainment and wedding venue, let's say, with a shared-use path there along the side of Smith Farm Road that doesn't currently exist, but is in the plans of Connect Stallings, is one of your adopted plans. And we drew a lot of new streets connecting through here because new development needs new streets and connections, but we took the liberty of taking your existing streets, street standards, and applying them here. So rather than just drawing the streets, we said, what type of street does it need to be, do we recommend it being? And we provided a lot of details on exactly what those streets should be, and they're consistent with your existing street design standards. We did add one or two street types in that were not currently in your street design standards, just common streets that, you know, a two-lane roadway with on-street parking on the side, street trees and sidewalks wasn't in your current standards. And that's a pretty common street in mixed-use areas. And we also had our consultant Kittleson look at the intersections of Stallings Road and 74 and Marie Garis Road because 74 is a real cavern from one side of the community to the other. And if people are meant to walk and bike more around in this area, then they're going to need a way to safely get across that huge cavern. And so we had them take a look at, what are some intersection improvements that could maintain the amount of landage that's going through there, but just make it safer for pedestrians to get across that area? And these are some of the illustrations that we made, like, it's a cross-section as if you cut through it like an apple. So public art, lighting, and things like that might make it more appealing for pedestrians to actually walk underneath the highway there. And right now, it probably feels pretty dangerous for them to do that. This also shows you, gives you a sense of scale of the mixed-use development that might occur on either side of 74 and how tall it is in relation to the height of the highway structure itself, and the water tower as well, just to give you an idea of the sense of scale. And then here's a rendering of what that area right along Stallings Road, looking at 74, might look like if the Silver Line gets built as light rail as is currently adopted. So they would have, they're planning a new bridge in between the 74 bridge and the hospital to fly over that roadway. And that's the end. So I'm happy to discuss or take any questions.
One thing you said that interests me, you said Indian Trail is planning for a terminal station?
Katz has an end-of-line station planned in Indian Trail, yes, as part of their adopted-
What has Indian Trail done to-
I don't know that they did anything. I mean, that's a question for Katz. I don't know how that station showed up on Katz' approved alignment.
They hadn't done, I mean, they haven't done any planning or rezoning or created an overlay district, have they?
No.
Because I'm aware they took- That's, I agree with that. They haven't done anything.
They'd-
It's been a long-term project for Stallings, and as far as any money from Union County going to that, my point is, any money from Union County, project going to any terminal station, Stallings first, obviously, it makes more sense where the first one is, out of Union West, that's where we want it.
Yeah.
Just curious what you thought. Then the second thing about your point about making Highway 74 and Stallings Road more walkable, I certainly agree with you. We begged DOT to put more lighting in there. Let us pay for some of it, and they turned us down, so obviously, whatever walkability we have to do. Thank you, sir.
I like most of what I'm, what you're presenting here. I mean, I'm looking at it as though the light rail is coming, because I don't know how else to look at it. And it seems to me that, you know, you show buildings with parking in the rear, which is correct. But before, when people come out of, come off of the train, there should be buildings, like just a walkable area, no streets right adjacent to, I don't know how many, you know, yards or 100 yards or something, just buildings that you could walk to, like you would see in an airport, but, you know, much tinier scale. And I would like to see just walkable, and, you know, then people can go out to the parking structure, which would be probably adjacent to the rail station. Then I also, I have issues with a lot of the uses that you have in there. I don't think, I don't think you need a, I don't think we need gas stations or convenience stores with pumps in the rear. You know, there's plenty of gas stations around, you know, anybody can go find another gas station. I just don't think that's appropriate.
You want to respond to that second, while you're thinking about? So that's in reference to the ordinance and the use table. And the stance that we took on that was, the overlay ordinance covers about five or six base districts.
Five or six what?
Base districts, meaning the existing zoning districts that are there. And so we wrote the ordinance so that the underlying base districts and where those are applied cover where a gas station can be located. So there's part of the overlay ordinance that's industrial. There's part of the overlay ordinance area that's Highway 74 business. There's part of it that's MX2, right? So the underlying zoning district that's underneath the overlay ordinance dictates where those uses can go. So you can't, you can't put a gas station anywhere in the overlay ordinance boundary. It's governed by the underlying base district. So if gas stations aren't allowed in MX2, then you can't put a gas station in the area of MX2 that is within the overlay area. Does that make sense?
I don't know, just-
It's a-
Car washes, they're not pedestrian-
Exactly. You're exactly right. You're exactly right. And that, we noted that, too, but we also noticed that the overlay boundary extends into areas that may not need to be the same type of place, meaning right around the station area, just like you said, needs to be the most walkable, the most pedestrian-friendly. But as you move over towards the industrial business district that's on the other side of 74, that might have a different character. But the overlay ordinance still touches that area, and that's where, I mean, the underlying base district and the uses that are already adopted within the underlying base district govern there. But with other standards in the ordinance, we made them ubiquitous across the whole overlay boundary area. We made them ubiquitous across the whole, so not dependent on the underlying base district. But the uses were a sticky one because of the fact that there's six underlying base districts in this area. Does that make sense?
I understand that, but I just think we would need to call out what, where a gas station or a car wash or whatever else you had.
Yep.
You know, sort of truck stops, you know, and there's places with outdoor storage, like a repair shop, and, you know, very well that they're going to have tires and, you know, I just think that this is a special district, and it should be, you know, for us to go, residents to go and enjoy the walkable part.
Absolutely.
So the, where the industrial area, is that where, McGee, is that, is that, that's an industrial-
I don't, I don't think it's technically zoned, that it might be general business, but I don't recall what that one is. But I know over, when you get towards the industrial district on the northeast side, across 74, that's all industrial. But, so you mentioned truck stops, like, I don't think that they're allowed in MX2. So any of these properties that are currently zoned MX2 now, they wouldn't be able to do a truck stop because they can't do it now. Does that make sense? Truck stops are only going to be allowed where they're currently allowed, which is in some of the highway-oriented.
Councilmember Wado, what I'm hearing you say is, you want to make sure, you know, we're doing transit planning, right? This is a special area. One of the priorities of the board is economic development. And what I'm hearing you say is that you want to make sure that, given the limited amount of space and land here, that it's not taken up by more standard, typical, traditional highway commercial-type businesses, truck stop, gas station. That's great feedback. I think that makes sense, and if we could just make a note of that.
Yeah.
And this is exactly what we want to do, is get feedback, and we can make a note and make sure we're right on that.
Yeah, yeah, but the way that we wrote it should achieve that goal, so. It's a lot to take in, yeah.
Also, like, the architectural standards, I didn't really see anything. You know, they need to be strong and precise, like, this is, I'm the character of Stallings, what is Stallings, it's like a mishmash of-
Have to see the reference to it, but-
Wanted to keep the character of Stallings.
That could, I mean, that could be preserving the existing residential neighborhoods that are there. I'd have to see the reference in the text, but, but you're right that we didn't, we didn't touch the architectural standards, no.
That's not part of what you do?
It's not part of that ordinance, no.
I guess I'm, what is the overlay? I guess my questions are coming from exactly where she's going, okay? You're saying we don't restrict what's going on there from the overlay. We don't do this, we don't do that. Maybe I just need two or three sentences on, what is the overlay, then?
So, so one of the things that we did was landscape and buffering standards. We enhanced those and improved those a little bit from the current ones to be more consistent with an area like this. And those kinds of things don't really impact as much the different land use types that you're talking about. Like buffering, buffering standards, you know, aren't restrictive on uses. It's just a nicer, a nicer buffer, right? A nicer landscaped area. Another thing that we did was said, okay, higher, you know, higher-density, five-story buildings are approved in here already, but if you're up against a single-family residential district, you have to drop down in height because it's not appropriate to have this beside this, you know? So those are the things that we did. We took, ordinances can be overly restrictive, right? So we tried to massage the things that we thought could be improved without being overly restrictive. And the uses that you talked about, we thought that the base districts already did a good job of keeping the non-walkable uses in the areas that were okay for non-walkability, and the walkable uses were in the right places. Like, a lot of this area is already MX2 now, which has pretty good walkability standards in the development.
So what's the point of putting that industrial area in the-
The frontage of the industrial area along that, somebody help me with the name of that road that, is that, thank you, yep. The frontage of that industrial area could potentially redevelop over time while the majority of that district stays industrial, right? The frontage of that area is very close to this proposed station location. So we thought, you know, there's a likelihood that some of that could redevelop into more of a mixed use. Like the parcel, do you see above where it says safe crossing, below, overpass? There's an NC DOT triangular parcel owned there, and we thought, you know, what a great spot for hotel for Stallings or something of that nature. And then just behind that, at the intersection of Richard Baker and Stallings, on the other side of the street from the townhome development, that might be a mixed-use development, but there's neighborhoods right behind that, so probably no, you know, no change behind that. So we saw potential change in some of those areas that are currently zoned industrial.
As far as these changes you're talking about and talking to you, Maxwell, so are these, when will they come to the planning board?
About to plan a board for review. I always hear recommendations.
Well, I'm trying, you know, my memory is not the best, but I don't think any of y'all were on the council, and Aaron, you can correct me, when we adopted these small-area You can see the lines, all I remember from that consultant was, these pictures are not going to be, not going to be your town in your lifetime. Certainly agreed with him, and the renderings, what we want to, our lifetime, no.
Live to 100 myself, but hey.
Well, I mean, I would, I would say, like, we talked with Atrium, and they have redevelopment ideas around the hospital area.
Portions of it, we'd love to see hotels and restaurants around the-
And what if the- And, and what if the, what if the farm sells next year?
What's that?
The Smith Farm, is that the name of it, on Smith Farm Road? What if that property sells next year? You know, then it could be developed by right with the current zoning that's on it, but...
The boogeyman is sewer, you know?
True.
All that land would have already been developed if they had sewer. I mean, we've already lost, uh...
Well, we see, we see people developing single-family and townhomes with no, no sewer. They're doing septic systems with that. So, you know, the, I think the important thing to keep in mind here is setting, plans like this help set a vision. And when you, when you market that to the development community, you say, "These are the kinds of things that our land use plan and this plan says that we want developed." And then you start getting less and less of the, of the low-slung highway stuff because they, they know, oh, okay, well, the town and the residents who've filled out the survey said they want this kind of stuff here. So when developers see that, they see an indication of market demand for that kind of development.
So, uh, if I own a piece of land, and this is adopted, summarize just two or three things that I'd wanna know as a property owner that just happened.
So, like I mentioned, the landscape and buffer standards.
Restrictive, or?
I don't know about restrictive, enhanced, yeah. So you have to, probably a little bit, a little bit.
It's all fair, I'm just saying. Property value may have gone up, you could argue.
Yeah, it depends on, that always depends on the comps, right? So if you're the first one to go in and develop, then no. But if you develop something nice, your, your neighbor's value is then gonna go up. Yep.
So buffering and...
But we would make him...
The ordinance says, right?
That's what I'm just trying to, bare bones, that. Because we'll, we'll be back for a rezoning action after this is endorsed and approved. The whole thing gets rezoned with the overlay on the existing.
There, there's also something to note about preserving, preserving right-of-way for the silver line for 18 months or something like that.
Okay, that's a good question. So, so talk about that. So if I own property on the right-of-way, even the portion that goes to Indian Trail, which I agree with the mayor, is less likely than the one that ends in St. What's the, what's the deal if I own a large parcel between?
That's within that swath.
Has a right-of-way, what happens there?
The part of your property that's within that swath, if I remember right, you can only do, like, parking lots and, and things like that, uh, green space within that part of the swath until 18 months. So there's development restrictions on the swath until 18 months after that, and then you can...
Is that today the case, or would only be after this is adopted? I can't remember.
Only after, yeah.
This, this has a right-of-way identified.
Yes.
And I can develop it with?
You can develop it now, but, you know, Katz is gonna say, "We highly recommend you don't build the hotel in that..."
What's the 18-month thing again? That's a new piece for me.
Uh, so that is, we modeled that off of the Charlotte ordinance because their attorneys did extensive review of the North Carolina general statutes and said, if I remember right, when I was there, they said, "We think that we can only request, uh, a reservation of that property for up to 18 months, and no more than that, or it won't be legally defensible."
That'd be something as we come forward. I, I'm more interested in, given the likelihood that the light rail, whatever, development is years down the road, what's the effect on a local property owner tomorrow if this is passed?
Yep.
Things he ought to be, she or he ought to be thinking about.
Yeah, and, and that's 100% fair. I mean, I think the, if it were me, off the record, or whatever, which I may not be off the record right here, but...
You're, you're on the record, right.
So if I were not, if I were taking my, not a consultant mind, and I'm not, you know, a staff member of Stallings, I would say, common sense tells you that building a building within that right-of-way, you need to be mentally prepared that 15 years from now, that building might be torn in half. And you're gonna have to go through, of course, you're gonna get paid, you know, market value for it and all that, but is that a hurdle that you're willing to go through? Maybe, because then you get to have that building for 15 years and then it, and then deal with it when it happens. So that's sort of the, the purpose behind the reservation and the purpose behind Katz's comments to... You, you just need to know that this is a corridor that's approved, you know?
Thank you, I think that's all.
Else? Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all for your time, yeah.
Thank you, Max. All right, next up is our audit presentation. And, uh, Ms. Mills is here, and Jessica, all righty.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. You all have hard copies of the audit present, or the actual audit in front of you. And in that binder, in the front page, or the front pocket of that binder, you have a hard copy of the, um, performance indicators that are on here, along with the responses. And that's what Emily is going to focus on tonight. Okay. Um, and so I'm gonna turn it over to Emily Mills, our auditor.
Hi.
Hey, good evening.
Good evening. My name is Emily Mills, and I'm a partner with Potter &amp; Company. And I'm pleased to be here before you guys this evening to present the town's financial statements for the year ending June 30th, 2024. And I want to first thank the town for allowing us to provide this audit service again, and also thank Jessie, Mary, and Marcia, and everybody for their help in getting this completed because we couldn't do it without them. Our independent auditors report that we issued is an unmodified opinion on the financial statements as of June 30th, 2024. An unmodified opinion is the highest level of assurance that we, as independent auditors, can issue. And that states that the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the fina, financial position of the town. This is commonly referred to as a clean opinion. In addition to the auditor's report, we have also issued a group of reports on the town's compliance. And these are found in the compliance section of the financial statements, which is near the back. These reports deal with the town's compliance with government auditing standards and also compliance with federal and state programs. And we had no findings on the major programs that we tested. We did note a financial statement finding, which we consider to be a significant deficiency. This finding was due to miscalculations of gross payroll for three employees and an overpayment of separation allowance. So the performance indicators here, these are developed by the LGC. And this is what they use to benchmark and evaluate units and kind of see how the health of the unit is doing. All of the town's benchmarks here, they're exceeding their peers. There's no items of concern. What the LGC wants us to do is, we fill out this data, and then they have this set up so if there's anything that pops up as a red shaded cell, then the town has to respond to the LGC and explain how we're gonna address this and what are we gonna do to kind of fix this going forward. So there's only two red shaded cells here that popped up. And these were not benchmarks, but these are just things that we found during the audit. The first one is that finding for the payroll calculations and overpayments, and the town needs to prepare a response and address that to the LGC about what the plans are, what you've done to mitigate that going forward. And there was also a budget violation for general fund debt service expenditures that I believe was maybe $4,000, and that was due to GASB 96, which is accounting for IT subscriptions. So the responses for these two items should be submitted to the LGC within 60 days of today. And they should be signed by the majority of council, the manager, and the finance officer. There are examples on the LGC's website for how you can respond to those. The financial statements were submitted to the LGC on November the 5th, and we received review from the LGC on November the 19th. And we had no modifications requested. You have any questions that I could answer?
Yeah, the, this page one?
Mm-hmm.
Can you go over that, that bar graph numbers, where, where it's talking about the minimum threshold?
Yep, so...
Tell me whether we're, we're okay or not?
You are, you are okay. So it's hard to see here, I've got a printed copy here. So down there at the very bottom, what they are doing here is they're taking your fund balance that's available and taking that as a percentage of your expenditures that you expended. And so the minimum threshold for units that are the size of this town is 34%. And the median is 63%. Your results are 149%. So you are above exceeding your peers in the minimum.
That's what I like to hear.
Yeah.
Does the red, maybe something bad, or is that just a color?
That's just a color, yeah. Yeah, so that, that's for 2022, 2023, and 2024. Yeah, and if you look in the, the blue up there, so the first section for the blue is municipalities, and then the second section is for counties. So, you know, we're gonna be in that top section up there, and it's gonna be that third line where it's a million to 9.99 million. That's where you guys fall, right there. So that's where it's pulling that, that data from.
Emily, you say the threshold, 34% minimum. You said average or median?
So, um, up, up in that chart is, that's the median. Yeah, and that's pulling from that first column in that blue chart up there. It says the median FBA.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay, yeah, I was looking.
Yeah, and I think they're interchanging their, their terminology there.
Questions for Ms. Mills? Got it?
How often does GASB 96 change?
It's a new standard, and so that came out, I think it was two years ago. I think this was our second year of, after the implementation. So it's not changing any, but, you know, we're, it's still relatively new, as in, we're getting used to...
I mean, they made a change two years ago. Is it, is this something that you have to, like, study hard and make sure you're not missing something every single year, or what?
It's something that needs to be evaluated every year. So, so what that is, is just a quick example of that, is like, the police cameras. So the, you guys have software that runs and monitors those cameras. So it's, that's considered an IT subscription. And so they're saying that that's really an asset, and they're putting that, that asset on your books, and then booking that, that lease liability for that, yeah. So it's just something that you have to constantly reevaluate. Hey, did we, we enter any type of new service agreement that falls underneath GASB 97 that we need to take care of, yeah?
Questions? I mean, do we have to approve this, or adopt it, or is this?
No, sir, not to my knowledge. Uh, I believe the only, I guess, next step would be to, uh, prepare the letter, and staff will do a draft, sending it to the LGC, which I believe, uh, we have letters in the back, yep.
Okay, oh, you got one started? All righty. Got the A-team on the back row back there, for, come over here. You must have, uh... Brought, brought her into the game here in case you need a relief pitcher there, come in, so. Good seeing you tonight.
Thank you.
All righty. Max, in the lobby?
Mayor, if he's not available immediately, we'd be happy to maybe start on the fund balance policy.
I, I thought the, um, the finance talk was gonna take a lot longer. I apologize, council.
No problem.
Um, let's see, where's the council?
I'll open the public hearing on text amendment 24 dot 11 dot 01.
I'm gonna reopen up this agenda, I think it got mixed up with the presentation. There it is. All right, thank you, council. Sorry, I apologize about the, the wait. This is TX 24 11, uh, dot 01. This is a text amendment to add brewery and other similar type of definitions to the ordinance. This is, we currently don't have brewery, distillery, food truck, mobile vendor, winery in the ordinance. And I looked at Indian Trail and Matthews and came up with a solution, or a definition, combined them, and tailored them to Stallings. I also additionally amended Brew Pub because it didn't fit their definitions, and I wanted to make it more consistent. The big thing to note is that I did add distribution at 75% for all of the different categories that it relates to, based on planning board's recommendation. And additionally, Brew Pub and brewery are a little bit different. Brew Pub is essentially a smaller type of brewery, a more retail-oriented type of brewery, or, uh, a retail area. So, currently don't have these definitions, so we wanted to enhance the ordinances applicability and provide more decision-making power for us to determine what a brewery is and what these similar uses are for staff. So we do recommend approval. Do you have any questions about these definitions?
So explain the 75% one more time to me, Max.
Yeah, of course. So upon, let's say a brewery was to locate, which we do, we do have something that may locate in, in the future, they would apply with a use permit, and they would sign the use permit stating that they would have a maximum of 75% of, of their business be distribution. And then we would have something in writing. We would not be continually going after this property to kind of verify that information unless we received, um, a complaint, or we do observe something. We'd have the authority then go in and request documentation on their distribution for percentage-wise. But we wouldn't be continually checking up on them weekly or monthly on that.
Is this a number consistent with their business plan, or?
With, this is a consistent number with brewery distribution throughout, um, this, the country. I looked online and got some articles about the percentage of distribution a brewery should have.
Mayor, I would add this, the broker has seen this and communicated with the, uh, with the brewery owner, and they are comfortable with these numbers.
That's all I need to know.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you. Oh, no, you can, um, we're just requesting the action for this specific text amendment for all these definitions to be adopted into the ordinance.
All right. This is the public hearing. Does anybody here wish to speak about this text amendment? Now that I'll close the public hearing, and then, uh, what's the discussion among council? Any questions for Max?
Yeah, so I would recommend, oh, excuse me, sorry. I would, we do have a distribution of beer and wine sales in our ordinance, and that's under industrial zoning. So I'd recommend that they're not to be located in like a town center or a specific zoning that breweries located in. I'd ask them to look at other properties like industrial. Yeah, there could be a few different options. We would get code enforcement involved and kind of address it that way, to have them come into compliance within thirty days, or however many days that the code enforcement needs to have them comply and prove the numbers. If not, we could even revisit, they could submit a text amendment and revisit that percentage. If it's, say, it's a thriving business and we don't want to really harm them, we could consider another text amendment in the future.
Okay.
Okay, motion by Mr. Richardson, second by Mr. Shaw. All in favor? All right, as have it, text amendment is approved. So we have a statement of reasonable consistency and reasonableness. The request was, staff requests a text amendment to add and update definitions to the Stallings Development Ordinance to clarify and expand upon existing language regarding emerging businesses and trends in the food and beverage industry. So can I get a motion to approve this statement of consistency and reasonableness?
So moved.
Motion to approve by Mr. Shaw.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ayers. All in favor?
Aye.
As have it. All right, thank you. On amendment twenty-four dot eleven dot oh-two, local government exemptions. I'll open the public hearing, and I turn it over to Max.
Hey, thank you. So TX twenty-four zero, eleven dot zero-two, this is local government exemptions. This is a proposal text amendment to have local government-owned properties be exempt from Article fifteen special events and temporary structures and Article twenty-one open space. Currently, we kind of have a gray area with events. Our ordinance has special events and structures in the ordinance, and there's food trucks under that ordinance as well. There's specific requirements on that. And being exempt kind of solidifies that gray area with, let's say, even Parks and Rec events or future events on local government-owned properties. Additionally, Article twenty-one with that exemption would exempt the town from being required to be open, to build open space for Greenway and Streetscape, and kind of have us take a step back and kind of figure out how we're going to fund those projects instead of being forced to pay the money upfront as a government. And so it's kind of a little bit more fiscal responsibility in how to research those tasks. The amendment's very easy. There's one sentence added to each at the beginning of each article, in Article fifteen and twenty-one. Properties owned by local governments are exempt from this article. We currently only have eleven properties owned by the towns. Very small. It's mostly, in this area, I have a map if you'd like to see it, but it does not affect a large amount of properties. And planning board did recommend approval of this, but they did recommend that the town council look into installing Streetscape in our town-owned properties that require it in the future, if the council wants to entertain that in the future. So staff does recommend TX twenty-four eleven dot zero-two.
I didn't get the planning board. They voted for it, but then they...
They did recommend approval, but they...
Opposite.
Yeah. Look into installing Streetscape where it is planned in the future, and kind of come up with just a recommendation, yeah.
Righty, any questions for Max?
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
It says, properties owned by local governments. That would also... Cats came in, for example, purchased a piece of property from, then that would exempt them from...
Um, no, I would say it would be like if Indian Trail bought some land.
Okay, so if...
Stallings, then they'd be exempt.
So that would impact, again, if it wasn't Charlotte, if it was, I mean, if it was Charlotte, Matthews, whatnot, if they own...
I don't believe that I know of any land in Stallings that's owned by another municipality.
No, I mean, it's really low, but... First read through this, my indication was is that this was this body from...
If, if you would want, you could say just Stallings is exempt, but I didn't want to...
Can I leave it up to any potential fusion?
Yeah. Yeah.
Why don't we just say Stallings?
I would say if council would like that change to say, instead of properties owned by local government, say properties owned by the town of Stallings are exempt from this article, we can, we can do that change. Yeah.
Somebody might be able to do some fast movement of the hands to get around something.
Okay, yeah, I'd be welcome to that change.
It wasn't that long ago that Blair Mill Park was owned by Hemmy Bridge.
I think, yeah, part of our, we own part of Blair Mill Park that's in Hemmy Bridge. We own it, so it would, if they had this ordinance in place, we could be exempt from it and their property.
All right, so let's get a consensus on that change. Where do we make that change here on this?
I, I can read that out loud. So instead of local governments, I could say, it would say, properties owned by the town of Stallings are exempt from this article on Article fifteen and Article twenty-one, as shown in the text amendment on the screen.
Other questions for Max? I'll close the public hearing. Any other discussion? Pleasure of the council. Motion by Mr. Richardson, second by Mr. Shaw. All in favor?
Aye.
As have it. All right, we got a statement of consistency and reasonableness. Text amendment twenty-four dot eleven dot oh-two, the staff request properties owned by the town of Stallings be exempted from Article fifteen special events and temporary structure and Article twenty-one open space. Ayers?
Second.
Hall, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Max.
On this one, also make note of the change, the local governments to Stallings.
I can definitely do that, yeah.
Yeah, I read it, right.
Just want to make sure.
That's pretty quick, wasn't it?
Thank you.
All righty, next up is our organizational meeting items. So appointment of Union County Public School Liaisons. I recommend we make Mr. Shaw, he's a former Board of Education member, knows everybody up there pretty well.
Put these one at a time or all together?
Yeah, do them one at a time.
David Shaw was the rep to Union County School Board.
By Mr. Richardson, second by...
Yeah, I'll second.
Mr. Ayers, all in favor? All right.
I was waiting for Dave to go, yeah, I'm good with that.
Oh, I am.
Okay.
All right, I'm the liaison for the quad, and I recommend just keeping me that, so. Mr. Richardson to keep me as the quad, all right, second by Mr. Hall, all in favor? Cartbo, current lineup is Mr. Richardson, and I am the alternate. I recommend keeping that.
All right.
Moved by Mr. Shaw, second by Mr. Ayers. All in favor?
Aye.
The third one is the Carolina Regional, formerly the Cog, and the lineup is Mr. Shaw's the member, and Mr. Ayers is the alternative, alternate. So I recommend keeping that. What's the pleasure of the council? By Mr. Ayers, second by Mr. Richardson to approve that. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, as have it, all right. And then we have the twenty-twenty-five meeting schedule as submitted there. All right. By Mr. Richardson, second by Mr. Hall. All in favor? As have it, and then the holiday schedule. Yeah.
Holiday for staff, is that what, government offices and all that? Yeah.
Motion by Mr. Richardson, second by Mr. Ayers to approve the holiday schedule, twenty-twenty-five. All in favor? As have it, all right. All right, Jesse, fund balance policy.
Evening. Okay, so you all have this as a handout. But previously, during last year's budget process, you know, discussions arose about what is the right amount of unrestricted fund balance to maintain. And y'all had previously established a twenty percent minimum, but there was no formal policy at the time. And since all that, the LGC has changed their recommendations of what a minimum fund balance should be. And as Emily just presented to you a few minutes ago, we should maintain a minimum of thirty-four percent in our unrestricted fund balance. So we have written a policy to come more in line with that, to align with the LGC's recommendation. And a big thing about their recommendation is that, you know, not only is it for unexpected things that may arise, but, you know, the majority of our general fund revenues come from property taxes, which are once-a-year revenues. So they want to make sure that we have enough cash on hand to continue to pay the bills when we're not bringing in a lot of money. So... So this top portion here is truly just from our actual financial statements, the audit that you have in front of you. This is truly the fund balance section on that balance sheet. And this current twenty percent column is actually what is in our audit, based on the twenty percent minimum that y'all had previously established. So this gives you some different scenarios. Here's what our financial statements would look like with the LGC's thirty-four percent minimum, and staff is recommending fifty percent. Now again, this is only talking about, it's unassigned here because that's the actual term in the GASB statement, but we typically refer to it as unrestricted. So this is just saying that we would maintain, based on last year's audit and our fiscal year twenty-five adopted budget, that we would maintain five-point-six million in unrestricted for our fifty percent minimum fund balance, but we would still have seven-point-eight million dollars of unrestricted funding that could be available to spend on, you know, unexpected items, emergencies, whatever you deemed inappropriate to spend on. So in looking at other municipalities, you'll see the majority of these do have higher expenditures than we do. They're over that ten million dollar threshold, so their minimum requirement per the LGC, or recommendation per the LGC is twenty-five percent. And it varies for the municipality. They set their own policy. So you'll see it goes anywhere from twenty-five up to forty percent in the comparisons that we looked at. But then this is based on the twenty-three audit. I don't have twenty-four numbers because they were all just submitted to the LGC so recently. So twenty-three is what I had, but you'll see that even though they have, you know, the LGC minimum is twenty-five percent for them, and then they have their policy, they're all still well above that, and are all still maintaining that fiscal responsibility and availability of cash to spend on things as needed. So then we get down into it, and this is just truly the policy itself. Not going to read through all of it. It kind of highlights why it's important to maintain a minimum fund balance, you know, to ensure that we have that cash flow in case things, something were to happen. We had an emergency, we lost, you know, any ability to bring in revenues. If we were to issue debt for something in the future, maintaining this fund balance, it helps us maintain that higher credit rating. So if we needed to do that, we would be able to get lower interest rates and just to have money for unforeseen, expected, unexpected items that may come up. Just put some definitions in here for you, what the different classifications of fund balance are, the non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and undesigned. And again, in this policy, we're really focusing on this unassigned category down here. And in addition, we are putting the enterprise funds in here. For us, the enterprise fund is really just stormwater. Y'all have already established a minimum of a million dollars. So this policy maintains that minimum of a million dollars, or fifty percent for stormwater as well, whichever is greater. And, you know, if, so here's the, the big thing. So in spending the excess fund balance, what we have over the fifty percent amount, it can be spent on any law, anything that we can lawfully spend money on, but we're saying that we would give precedence to these types of items here, the one-time expenditures that don't result in additional recurring operational costs, the unanticipated unbudgeted expenditures that where we need to spend money before the next fiscal year, so we can't wait on the next year's budget process, any additional costs for ongoing capital projects, or if there are capital projects and expenditures, that would be burdensome to fund through the normal operating budget procedures. The main point in all that is to say that, you know, fund balance is really our savings account. So that money can only be spent one time. When we, once we spend it, it's gone. So good practice is to just not spend that money on things that are going to be recurring operating expenditures. We need to try to make sure that we spend that money on those one-time items. And so that is a very quick gist of the policy.
All righty, thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Yep, any questions for Jesse? You know, the only comment I had is the same one I made to Alex, you know, I was talking to council. We were, we were at thirty, lowered it to twenty, and I'm trying to remember the reason why.
Because we decided not to be the bank of Stallings.
Yep.
And it was still well above the minimum of...
Eight percent, yeah.
So that's why we came down to that. Find that the LGC has bumped the category to thirty-four, so...
My concern was, so now we're going from thirty to twenty, and then twenty to fifty, which seems like a big jump. I understand what the reason for the money is, and I'm glad we're in that position, but also I don't like the... You know, I appreciate the LGC making a recommendation there, but we know what's best for our town, and I'd recommend just going to the LGC minimum thirty-four percent. Depends some leeway, our town. Question, or questions for Jesse?
So the thirty-four percent is just a recommendation?
It, it is just a recommendation by the LGC, but to my knowledge, there are not any municipalities that don't have a policy that at least aligns with the LGC's recommendation.
What was their reason from going from eight to thirty-four?
I don't know the exact reason of going from eight to thirty-four, but there, they did, they group things into categories now. So it used to just be eight percent across the board, because if you annualize twelve-month of expenditures, it's like eight-point-three percent or something for one month. So that's where the eight percent came from. But then they realized, okay, well, eight percent is not a good threshold for everybody. So now that's, it's based on your expenditures, because obviously the less expenditures you have, the more you do need to keep on hand, because, you know, one month's worth of expenditures takes up a lot of money when you're in the smaller situation. And so now they have the groupings where it's just based on, on that, and the lower your expenditures, the higher. You know, less than a hundred thousand, they require a hundred, or not require, they recommend a hundred percent.
How close are we to the ten million threshold?
We're actually fairly close, but we're not quite there yet, even with our twenty-four audit.
How close?
Let's see, I've got that, it's like nine, it's not in there. It's nine point... It's twenty-three, nine-point-four. Mm-hmm.
Well, doing 34%, uh, risk?
I don't see any risk, no sir. I would say that at least, you know, aligns us with the LGC. And again, it's just that unrestricted amount that we shouldn't spend. We still have all that other funding that we can spend.
Right, and I, and I understand you don't have a crystal ball, something might.
Right.
Current conditions, you don't see?
Not at the moment, no sir. But as you said, we can't, you know, I mean, nobody probably would have predicted Hurricane Helene up in the mountains either, so.
Any logic behind 50%?
Just that 50% would be about six months' worth of expenditures. Should something happen, we could maintain current operations for six months, which would give us enough time to hopefully figure something out, should something happen.
How many months would 34%?
A little over, right around four.
I don't like doing is hopping from fund balance for operations.
Well, and the policy does say that if you were to adopt 50%, and for some reason you did need to go below 50%, we can do that. We just need to put a plan in place to build it back up within the next 36 months or three years. So it would give us time to build back up, so. So we could do that, 36 months. So if something were to come up and we needed to go below 50, we still could.
Not shackling yourselves.
Oh, I know, yeah, yeah.
Prove it by vote, and you can.
Had to dip into it every year.
Steve.
I have a question for Alex. I mean, with what happened in, in western North Carolina, is there, do they typically do like financial studies after events like that there? That we could take examples from and be able to determine? You know, here, here's what we saw, positive from financial outlays from the hurricane for these towns, and this is where there were deficiencies. So I mean, I was just curious if there's, will the state do some type of financial investigating to see whether or not, you know, places like us could take advantage of, you know, what did they learn? Best practices, not so best practices, kind of thing.
That's a really good question, Councilmember Ayers. I'll answer it the best I know how, and invite my colleagues to join in here to help. I think typically when you get in those extreme situations, kind of hang on, right? We're talking about the, the cover of the magazine, cover of the newspaper, cover of the news, front page news issues, like western North Carolina. Those situations, you would have the federal, the state government and come in and help, right? It would be more than any local government in North Carolina. That's one of the reasons, in some ways, the federal government, state government acts as the insurer of all infrastructure issues. Where you need to get, so in that case, it's just kind of hanging on until federal assistance gets there. Where we need to be cognizant is situations where, um, not on the news, right, but it affects us a lot. And then right? That might not be something that would get the attention of Raleigh, certainly not Washington DC. Something that we would most likely have to threshold enterprise fund or stormwater fund, because it budgets for two super large. So as far as study's been done, I, I know, and, and or Pro Tim Shaw, you might be able to speak to this when we're at the chamber event. Or legislature, or folks in the General Assembly speak. They indicated that the cost for recovery for North Carolina, I believe, by your process, and the state would just have to budget. So we don't know what the amount would be.
I was just kind of curious.
That help?
Well, yeah, I was just kind of curious, because you're talking about the rainy day fund, basically. So, you know, we're kind of making guesses. So if there was additional, something that would come out of that, that would allow us to, to know a little better. Okay, I got it. Sounds good.
And really, one of the big things that comes with this is, is having adequate cash flow, right? Being able to pay our bills. It's important we have enough money there where you don't have to worry about that on a, on a day-to-day basis. Because some of our revenues come in regularly, a monthly basis, right? But even those like sales tax tend to be unpredictable. Summer or Christmas tends to go up. And certainly with property taxes, it's only one time a year where we get a big jump. The rest of the year, the payments are much lower. So we haven't talked about it, but I do think cash flow.
All righty, what's the pleasure to council?
34%. Is there anything else in the policy that needs to be adjusted?
Just the, just here, the 50, the two 50% items.
By Mr. Richardson, second by Mr. Shaw. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
All in. Have it. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. All right, chief, we should have moved this up, so you could have got home.
Good evening, everybody. Sure, most of you recall that in 2022, you approved an incentive plan for the police officers. And the next slide will show what that current incentive plan is to help us assist with recruitment and retention of officers. This is just kind of a background here. In 2023, I'm sure you, you all remember that we experienced our first deadly force incident. And during that after-action review, one of the indicators that came out of that review was officer fitness levels had a potential impact in the outcome of that event. And then this year, one of our 20, our balanced scorecard goals is to create a, um, uh, fitness program. And I, when I was doing a little bit of research, I was kind of shocked by some of these numbers. International Journal of Emergency Health talked about, uh, an officer's lifespan being 22 years less than his civilian counterpart. And then another one, this Sigma Tactical article I found, talked about the average age for a heart attack with a police officer is 46, compared to 65 for somebody not a police officer. So I'm 51, and I was like, whoa, okay. But this is the current incentive plan, I'm sure many of you remember. It's got an educational component to it, just some intermediate and advanced certificates, FTOs, SRT, accent reconstructionist, bilingual, so on. Officers were very happy when this got put out. And actually, we've seen that increase over the years, over these last, um, almost three years. So a lot of officers have decided to go back to school. South Piedmont's got a great program, and officers can get their associates then transfer to ECU, ANT have online programs that accept all those credits. So we've seen officers try to get their education and certifications up, moved up the ladder. But tonight, what I wanted to do is I wanted to recommend adding two incentives to this program. One is a voluntary fitness incentive. We would do it annually. We'd be using the Peace Officer Wellness Entry Requirement. It is broken down by age and sex, and so it's different. So 50-plus guy would be a little less than a 21-year-old. And then it breaks down all the way, age groups from 21 to 60. Everything we would need to do that fitness assessment, we can use in our fitness center we have up here on campus. And I'm recommending a $500 cash incentive. If an officer passes that fitness incentive, and they would be eligible to do that annually, and that'd be $500 after taxes. And with our finance per, sitting here, I don't mean cash in hand, uh, but a check, but equivalent to $500. And then the next one is our DRE, or Drug Recognition Expert incentive. This is quite the incentive, and the, what brought this up is we have an officer who just achieved DRE certification. But this has over 80 hours, it's closer to probably 120 hours of prerequisite training, and then 80 hours of classroom. And then they've got, um, it's, uh, in-the-field certification, they have to write these reports. And so drug recognition is for DWI or impaired driving that's not alcohol-related. So if they were to get a DWI and believe that it's not alcohol, but they can still show impairment, this person, this DRE can come in, and they do all these metaphysical tests to determine whether it's a central nervous system stimulant or a depressant, and then go through all these different tests that are not chemical, like blood or breath. Like I said, you have to get the DA, has to sign off on this person going. Other DREs have to do it, and the chief of police has to send a letter of support saying, we support this officer in going through this training. What impressed me the most when this officer went through, there's, now that he's certified, there's less than 200 DREs in the state of North Carolina. So that is a big, for 100 counties, that's 200, and five of them are here in Union County now, so. But with this certification, we would request that officers eligible for $1,200 annual incentive, as long as they maintain their Drug Recognition Expert certification. And that falls in line with our accident reconstruction, reconstructionist certification. The good thing here, funding, I'm not asking for any money. So I'm sure, uh, those are the best times for me to come up here, I'm not asking for anything. But the incentive line is funded to a level that we can add these initiatives and not have to ask for any more money. So, um, everything, we're good as far as money. So tonight I ask to approve adding the additional incentives to our incentive program for the police department. And with that, I'll take any questions you might have for me.
DRE, after you do it the first year, do you, do you have to do eight hours in the second year to get?
No, sir, but you have to do so many tests, uh, within a three-year period. I think you have to do 10 actual, uh, uses as a drug recognition expert within three years to keep your certification valid. So they have to continue practicing that skillset. So normally, uh, because you're doing things like, uh, blood pressure and some balance tests and heart rate monitoring, an officer will make a, a stop for impaired driving. They'll, they'll realize there is, you have to show a level of impairment. So they would take you into custody for being impaired. And normally, it happens, they come in, you take the, if you agree to take the breath test, you'll show that it's, it's below the legal, way below the legal limit, so below .08. And that's when they'll say, hey, it must be something else, so we're going to ask a drug recognition expert to come in. That's usually done, for ours, would be done here in the intoxicizer room in the police department.
Officer that has gone through the program, has he done?
Uh, other than what they do in class, and then he's done 12, he's had to do 12 case studies, which are graded by the other DRE, the, uh, DRE instructors that teach the class. So he hasn't had any actual ones yet. He just, he just finished it here in the last probably three weeks.
Officers, do you feel would be necessary calling to have this DRE training? All of them, or?
Just one. Just being that, it's very hard to get into, but it's such a, a specialty. You know, you would, if, it'd be very rare to get more than, than one. Yeah, I mean, my department that I came from in Illinois, we, we had, you know, 85 employees in, um, in the police department, and we only had one, and he was the only one for the whole county.
We already have one.
We do, yeah. Yep.
Questions for chief?
And it might be helpful, just so you know, we, over since 2022, we've had almost 125% increase in impaired driving arrests.
Harder to differentiate the DUIs relative? Right forward at least? Harder to?
No, they're actually, um, uh, no, normally you can tell pretty fast whether, uh, they'll use a portable breath test after they do roadside, if they see impairment, and either they're going to be, you know, hovering around 08 or higher, and they'll know, oh, we got an alcohol one. But it's, you, impairment is the big thing they've got to see. So as long as they can prove impairment, uh, if the alcohol number's not there, they can bring them in and, and utilize that as a resource.
I'll make a motion to
All right, motion by Mr. Shaw, second by Mr. Hall, all in favor?
Uh.
As have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. All right, next up is Aqua Sewer Plant, Mr. Hall.
Yes. So I know that over in District 1 through a few times. It is. And I know, in talking with Alex, this has been an issue in three days.
Absolutely, uh, thank you, Mr. Hall. Glad to talk about the background, as far as I know. My understanding is this has gone on a number of years. I'm afraid I can't give you the exact amount, but I've been here for close to six years now, so. Well before my time. So for years, the town has received, um, complaints about, uh, noxious odors. Just like any private sewer plant, sometimes it's worse than others. And so really, the town, and we've investigated this, because we've tried to take the path in the past of forcing it on a local level. And what we found out was that, um, we as a local government don't have the authority to regulate. That is the role of environmental quality, NCDQ. So what we've tried to do as a town is, you know, hear the complaints, you know, Aqua at the same time. Reach out, uh, as elected officials, to the state, and let them know what we're hearing, and encourage them to kind of take action. Back in the past couple of years, I know Mayor Dunn sent a letter. Got copies of that, if anybody's interested. Kind of lays out the history. And indicated that under the, the state statute, it's 15A NCAC B dot 1806. I don't know why I said that, I guess if you're a lawyer, you've got to read the statute, right? And, uh,
And just said, hey, listen, the state has a duty, power to hold Aqua accountable. And so just encouraging you to do that. Recently, heard concerns from residents that at times, the odors still are there. Paul, you and I talked, and you smelled it at times at your house, right, in Emerald Lake. That's kind of the history, as I understand it.
I agree with you, Graham. We just need to draft another letter, send it to the new governor. Good news is that the Aqua people are engaged with those citizens.
When you say the Aqua people, who are they engaged with, the state?
Oh, the citizens in the neighborhood. Based on the emails I've read.
That direction, what I'll do is I'll draft a letter, Councilmember Hall, I'll send it to you, let you review it, make sure it hits all the points that you want to hit. And then I would suggest it come from, I'll do all the work, but come from the mayor.
You did all the work first time, yeah.
I think, well, I would say that, but you played a key role. But, and then send it to you, and we'll send it along from the office of the mayor.
Yeah, we'll send it to the governor, Dean and Todd, and the people from Aqua.
Okay. Do we want to wait? When does, when does the governor inaugurated, the new governor? Do we want to wait until after the new governor is inaugurated? Okay, so I'll put a calendar reminder, Mayor, Councilmember Hall, if this is okay with you, that once the governor is inaugurated, we'll send the letter.
Find them?
They regulate them, not us, so they would, they would do what needs to be done.
Share the letter that...
Did the letter get any response from?
Not to me.
Directly, no?
Problem is, the smell happens like Friday at 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock, whereas the person goes out, doing the inspection at like 1:00.
I've had a lot of correspondence and been there too, it seems like, as the evening still airs in the heat of the summer.
Another, I... I see the letter is from a, references to Justin Nicolet at Noowood, and I feel like Mr. Kirby lived on Noowood, if I'm not mistaken.
Also, I know one of the things we did when we sent the mayor's letter, we also CC'd all the news media that we could think of. And there did end up being an article in the Charlotte Observer, bringing attention to it. I'll pass out a copy of that too, if anybody...
All righty, everybody good with that? Let's move on. This will be real quick, now that I've looked at these numbers, the picture's a little bit better. 11A, the ponding mitigation, the recommended from staff there. There's only one that, it's number two, 2,600 flagstick. Looks like to me, let's see how much money that would cost us. Not much, so. Less than $10,000, but that's the only one that, it looks like just a small... But it's still $10,000. Here's $10,000, would you spend it to fix this roof? One 2,600 flagstick. That's not your house, is it, Graham? Just want to make sure. Real quick, you all want to keep it in or not? Yeah, those, and I agree with the pooling, all the other ones, but this one seemed like...
With your question, Mr. Russell, do you mind kind of helping talk to us about just kind of the reason for it, some of the issues that ponding describes, and why we're proposing?
Yeah, so with the ponding issues, it's more of a safety, it's twofold. It's, one is a safety issue, especially during the winter months. One, the water on the streets are going to freeze, and it becomes a slipping hazard, you know, during, during the winter times. But also during the winter times, when there's water on the roadway, the water will penetrate into the roads, and then it'll freeze thaw, which then will start cracking the roads, which deteriorate our roads quicker. That's kind of our deal. We're trying to mitigate those so we can expand, you know, keep the life of the road a little longer.
Thank you, Justin. No?
I recommend approval of the staff recommendation for the...
Gotcha. Motion by Mr. Richardson to approve the contracting with... Yeah, I could have. Precision Infrastructure Management, all right.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Richardson, second by Mr. Ayers, all in favor? As have it, all righty. Yeah, we got the money, but like I said, by $10,000.
Well, I would too.
All right, next up is 11B, Mr. Ayers and myself, we're talking about maternity leave and sabbatical leave. Mr. Ayers and I were talking with Eunice at the tree lighting, and we've made aware that Stallings doesn't have a maternity leave policy. Due to the law, we don't have enough employees, and so. Steven, go ahead.
All I really wanted to do is just get a, just effectively ask staff to take a look into what policies may be out there, and kind of bring back to the council some ideas for improving our current sabbatical maternity leave and paternity leave. I think, again, we were kind of shocked at, because I guess, maybe because we work at Altie Zar, and kind of give us an idea of, you know, potentially, seems to me that there's a deficiency there. Seems like maybe we could improve upon it. And all I'm asking here is the council to vote to kind of give that direction to staff.
Yeah, we don't need a motion, we can just keep considering. Thank you, David. Ryan?
Yeah, I'm okay. Sabbatical is a strange word.
I would do maternity leave, but we, we tend to follow them anyway, in FMLA, we follow that. And so that guarantees you 12 months of leave. Keyword is leave, though, it's not kind of paid leave. I know that's something that's come up in staff discussions. And so what we'll do, what I'm hearing, is staff will go and will research and kind of bench.
They, they can use their own sick time and, okay, and if they run out, then they're not, just don't get paid.
Yeah, what FMLA does effectively is guarantee you that when you come back, you're guaranteed to have your job back, right? So at the town, we allow them to use...